Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to complain about the microphones again. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, and it's 6:00 PM. This meeting is held under the guidelines approved by Governors Baker and Healy, extending authorization for public meetings through August 4th, 2027. The meeting is being recorded via Vonage to provide access to all town residents, and several individuals will be joining the meeting via Vonage this evening. First of all, I'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of regular session meeting minutes from August 4th, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes of August 4th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we approve the regular session meeting minutes from August 4th, 2025. The next item up is a joint meeting with the Board of Health, and it's for discussion and vote to appoint a candidate for the vacant elected seat until town elections in May 2026. So do we have the Board of Health there?
Do we have to call to order?
Yeah. Have you called your meeting to order?
I have.
Good evening. Thank you. To appoint candidate for the vacant elected Board of Health seat until town elections of May 2026.
Do you want to come up closer?
So we've called the Board of Health meeting to order, and now the motion and/or discussion for appointing.
I would assume that you would have your meeting, you'd have your discussion, and make the motion and approve from your standpoint, and then you would come over to us for our approval. Correct.
I make the motion to approve the candidates to get it.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? The candidate Jeff Jowinski. So if no further discussion from the Board of Health, it will go on, right?
Yes.
Great. Yes.
It's all approved? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Jeffrey Jowinski?
I move that the Board approve the appointment of Jeffrey Jowinski to the Board of Health.
Second. Any discussion? And he did provide us information on his application to the Board.
And just to be clear, that's till the May 26 election.
Right. This is temporary until the May 26 election. Right. And do I have a motion?
Yes, we have.
Did I just make it?
I guess so.
Yeah.
And I seconded it.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Is Jeffrey here?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, how many meetings on that quick?
Oh, they will be. I'm working on it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and a possible vote as follows pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 64A, as amended by Session 2024, Chapter 140, Section 93, effective November 1st, 2024, and year 2025, Chapter 14, Section 23, effective August 5th, 2025, to approve of the sale of real estate owned by the town of Webster and located at 46 Granite Street, identified as assessors parcels 14-G-15-0, acquired by the town through a tax lien foreclosure judgment issued by the Massachusetts Land Court on July 15th, 2025, in docket number 21 TL 000988. Tim, could you let us know the purpose of the new law that covers the town foreclosures and what changes?
Sure. First, I just want to say there wasn't a whereas in there anyway, so I'm not sure it's actually, you know, like legalese, you know, just kind of making a joke because almost everything we get from attorneys has whereas, whereas. So basically, what happened as a result of the Supreme Court decision, Tyler versus Hettipin County, Minnesota, from May 25 of '23, the Supreme Court ruled that communities can no longer keep the excess funds when they foreclose on properties. So the Massachusetts legislature has changed the rules and the laws. So now they've set certain criteria that have to, or processes that have to be followed in order to foreclose on the, or foreclose, and then either we have to determine whether we're going to keep the property, sell the property. We then have to notify the former owner of our decision. If we were to keep the property, an appraisal has to be done within a certain amount of time, and then we would have, funds would have to be appropriated to pay the owner, the prior owner, if there was anything owed. In this case, we're recommending to sell the property. So what will happen is we have to hire a realtor, which didn't happen before, you just went out to auction. We have to hire a realtor. We have to go through, if applicable, we have to go through the procurement rules and laws to do so. And at that point, the town is kind of acting as a fiduciary on behalf of the owner. The town gets to keep what it's owed, plus any costs that we have, but then any excess would get paid over to the prior owner.
Can we cover all our costs?
We can cover all our costs up to whatever we receive. So on this particular property, I believe, if I recall correctly, there was about $28,000 of demolition costs that actually have a lien attached to the property. So best estimate of what we might get at sale, we probably won't cover all of our costs on this particular property.
Did the town demolish it?
Yes. Yes. I don't know the specifics of it, but I do have, like I said, there was an actual lien placed on the property for the demolition cost of $28,000. So we will, more likely not, unless the sale price comes in much higher than estimated, we will get all of our costs, we'll get our costs back. There probably will not be any excess funds to the prior owner.
Do you know what the value?
$45,000 is the estimate. And estimated costs, over here, approximate $56,000. So, you know, if the demolition hadn't occurred, we probably would have been in a position where we would, you know, we would probably recoup more than our costs, and would, you know, then the excess would go to the prior owner.
Through the chair. Tim, I noticed that in the suggested language, that it said, use the term for the retention or sale of.
It should be for the sale.
In this language, it says.
So it should be.
It does say sale now.
Yeah, it does say to approve the sale in here.
Right. I started on that, and I'm just curious. Are we in violation of the law if we did nothing? Yes.
Yes.
So you have.
But we don't know what would happen, but.
But you have to sell it, is what it comes down to.
We don't have to sell it. We could keep it for a municipal purpose. However, at this time, there's no
No, I understand.
real good municipal purpose to keep it for.
How long do we have to decide whether we're going to sell it or keep it? I know it wasn't.
You have until September 22nd.
Is it?
We have 60 days from the time they were notified on, I think it was August, sorry, foreclosure judgment was issued July 25th. The attorney says we have until September 22nd to notify the previous owner of our intention. If we don't notify the previous owner of our intention, then we may lose rights. What rights those are, we don't know. The other option is if you make, so this has come to the Select Board at the advice of counsel. Previously, Town Treasurer made the decision whether to foreclose on a property. You know, I hope that we have your support and that you vote to approve, or vote either way. If you want to keep it, we're more than happy to do that. But we would like a vote either way. Without a vote, I would probably recommend to the Treasurer that we put it for sale anyways. To hold on to the property, it's not like the, it's not like previous. You know, before this happened, you typically held on to properties. You'd get four or five or more, and then you'd have an auction, you'd auction them all in one day to get a lot of interest. That, the most recent time that happened, we had auctioned one property during Fiscal '22, and we auctioned, I think, 10 properties in one day in Fiscal '21. But there's no real advantage. Regardless, even if you hold the property and then want to sell it later, you can't auction it. You have to go through this process of selling it. So there's no, there's not really any benefit unless you have, unless there truly is a municipal purpose. You know, if it was land attached to parkland and you wanted to extend a park, that would make sense. My understanding is this is not the case with this.
So, Tim, when did, when did the structure come down? I take it it was unsafe and we condemned it?
I don't think I have that here.
Because the realty.
I do think it was several years ago.
Yeah, the realty sites still have, have it as a house on it when you, when you Google it. But if there's no use for the property for us to retain it, it seems like you want to sell it.
The only thought that I put out there is either way, the owner or the previous owner, because of the expenses incurred so far, will not see any.
It's unlikely. Like, I mean, like I said, you're putting it out, you're hiring a realtor, and like I said, right now, we have approximately, I think, $56,000 of costs that we could recoup. That's going to go up or down depending on
Yeah.
interest and stuff like that, when it, you know. But ultimately, so if it sold for 75, then yes, the owner, prior owner would get some.
And we'd break even.
What's that?
And we would break even.
And we would break even. Yep.
I guess my question was, you know, it seems like that property value went up a few thousand dollars just in the last couple of years each, each time. If we were to hold on to the property and that increased, you know, a couple more years, would that value?
Well, the thing is, we would still, I guess it's possible that we would get more. Like, I don't know, like.
Or lose less, let's put it that way.
But there's also the, if the economy turns around and the market value goes down, you know, there's, there's that. There's also the fact that while, while we, while the town owns it, we can't assess any taxes on it.
Right.
So you're losing that tax revenue. So one of the reasons we want to get it back, what are, I guess the reason, main recommend, main reason to recommend selling it is so that somebody builds a house on it, and we are then going to collect real estate taxes on the property that instead of being worth $45,000 is now worth $45,000 plus whatever the building is.
Now, does the property value, if that was sold, say it was sold for $32,000, does that become the value on the books of that property that's now?
No, not necessarily. I mean, that's, that would be, you know, that might have an impact, but ultimately, the assessors have their own criteria, rules that they follow. So I don't think it would drag that, and like I said, the larger impact would be what building, if someone were to put a building on it. Because, oh, the theory is you're going to get a developer to buy it. They're going to put a property on it so they can make a profit on selling the house. So effectively, you know, the real benefit is having a house there that is going to be a brand-new house. It adds to new growth and, you know, future taxes.
Any other discussion?
No. Thank you, Tim.
Can I have a motion?
Absolutely.
Are we ready to say that we want to sell?
That would be the motion, right?
That would be the motion. That's going to be the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we take measures to sell the property on 46 Granite Street.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The town will sell the property at 46 Granite Street. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to vote to authorize the Water and Sewer Superintendent to sign the monthly release of funds from the Clean Water Trust. Can you kind of explain this a little bit?
So this was a recommendation from Ty and Vaughn.
Turn your mic.
Sorry, this was a recommendation from Ty and Vaughn. This is to streamline the process of getting the payments. Tom Cutler deals with this day in and day out. Instead of having to go through Rick for the signatures, this would just be a secondary signature so that these payments can become.
So it would no longer need Rick's signature. Tom would be authorized.
He would have the.
Because I know there was discussion with Rick was away. There was something, the signature was needed.
Correct.
So I thought he was going to be a backup, but this is a move to transfer.
Yes.
So they both can sign?
Yes.
He, Rick, Tom can sign without Rick.
Tom can sign.
Tom can sign, but Rick cannot?
They both can.
Well, they both can.
Yes.
They're not, it's not required.
It's not a dual.
No, it's not a dual signature. One, either one can sign.
Right, right. Oh, so Tom will still, Rick will still retain the?
Correct.
Okay. If Tom was away.
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Courtney. Right, do I, any discussion? Do I have a motion to vote to authorize the Water and Sewer Superintendent to sign the monthly release of funds from the Clean Water Trust?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Next item is the discussion on possible vote to approve and accept the updates to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan. It is, Anne here?
Is Anne?
Sorry, Anne was going to attend.
She was going to attend virtually, right?
Yes. Yep. She said she's in the room.
She's in the room?
In our chat room, in our.
Oh.
Sure.
Is she in the building?
She is not.
Oh.
Hello? Hi, Anne. Sorry, we had to get in touch with you this way. Fortunately, it wouldn't connect.
That's fine, I couldn't figure out the tech on the other way, so. Hi, Anne, it's Tom Claybart.
Hi, Tom, I can see you all, I'm watching the video.
Okay. Do you have anything to present?
Yes, I have forwarded a resolution that FEMA prefers to see by vote officially adopting the plan. It's one of the many little crossing of Ts and dotting of Is that's required in order for us to finalize the plan in their eyes and to receive our grant payment. So the resolution, I did forward it to Courtney. I don't know if she was able to, you know, print it out in time for the meeting.
I do have it.
Okay. I don't know if you have to read that out loud. I mean, Elaine would probably know better because she has more experience with this type of stuff, but they definitely want to vote, and the document is set up for, to record the vote and for Tom to sign it.
Is that in a packet?
That was not in the packet. I printed it into the red signature folder. It will sort of proclamation of this whereas, whereas.
Yeah, it's right here. Actually, it's the one that's going to be signed. Is there any way we can quickly get copied for everybody?
I can, can we just read it? Can we just read this?
I can just read it if it's okay with that.
From scratch document. It is a, it's a Class A document. They did an excellent job. I'm very pleased with the product. It dovetails into quite a few things that are already happening in town and can be easily monitored by, you know, anybody who wants to, you know, include some of these components in whatever documents they are putting forward for, you know, future town plans. The town planner will ultimately be the one to monitor and dovetail it into things like the master plan update. So it's a good document, and I'm very pleased with it.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. A resolution of the Town of Webster adopting the Town of Webster Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, five-year update, January 2025. Whereas the Town of Webster recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property within the Town of Webster, and whereas the Town of Webster has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as Town of Webster Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, five-year update, January 2025, in accordance with federal laws, including the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergencies Assistance Act as amended, the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968 as amended, and the National Dam Safety Program Act as amended. And whereas the Town of Webster Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, five-year update, January 2025, identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risks to people and property in local government from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. And whereas adoption by the Town of Webster demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the Town of Webster Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, five-year update, January 2025. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town of Webster, Mass., that Section 1, in accordance with Section 3-2B of the Town of Webster Charter, the Board of Select adopts the Town of Webster Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, five-year update, January 2025. While content related to the Town of Webster may require revisions to meet the plan approval requirements, changes occurring after adoption will not require the Town of Webster to re-adopt any further iterations of the plan. Subsequent plan updates following the approval period for this plan will require separate adoption resolutions. And after this, it says adopted by a vote of whatever in favor and so much against and so may abstain this ninth day of September, September 2025, by Tom Claybart, Chairman of the Board of Select. Any discussion?
Through the chair. I did have a few comments I wanted to make because I've read the whole thing. And I, this is a former area of mine. And first, Anne, I wanted to thank you, and I wanted to thank the committee and the consultants for putting this document together, and the citizens who actually were part of focus groups and made comments and took the surveys. I think there's so much good information on it on what types of natural hazards we have been exposed to in Webster, and the predictions for the future. And I think there's a really good analysis of the capabilities and vulnerabilities. And so I commend it to everybody in Webster to read. I appreciated the recap of what didn't get done in the last plan, and I really think the important thing for us to look at is the detailed charts with the goals and the actions. And I think the report gets right on what the key issues are and how difficult the problems are to solve some of them. problems are to solve some of them. There are a couple of areas I really think are really important. I think outreach to the community and not just the marginalized community, which is highlighted in this report. We've got to find better ways to get the word out. I think the lake experience this summer showed us that we're not reaching everybody and that what is the best way to notify people in an emergency has to be a high priority for us. And I keep thinking of those Care County floods and how the government took it on the chin for that, and I think we need to be better prepared. One of the observations I had here is that this plan highlights that there are a lot of other plans that are very important in this area. There's a comprehensive emergency management operations plan, which it says was completed in two thousand twenty-four. I can't find it. I went onto the Webster website and I can't find that plan. But I think there's some key activities in this one, identifying evacuation routes, shelter plans that are the same in both of them. And when I worked for the EPA for the Emergency Planning Community Right to Know Program, we planned for both the natural disasters covered here and man-made disasters. And just a couple more things, if you bear with me. The mitigation strategy in chapter seven calls for us to maintain this comprehensive emergency management plan. And in my experience, it's not only maintaining, it's exercising. And my suggestion is now that Chief Sad is on board. Perhaps it's a good time to take a look at this area and what kind of priority actions do we need to take? In fact, on page six-two, it says that the Board of Selectmen assists with dissemination of information in the event of an emergency through social media and the town's website. I'm not quite sure I know what that means. And in seven-seven, we talk about unified incident command, it promotes it, and then it tells us that all staff have gotten a link to understand what it is. I'm not sure what the result is on that. And I can tell you from experience that the emergency is going to come when the key people are out of town or it's two o'clock in the morning. For those of you who remember this, Exxon Valdez, the big oil spill happened on Good Friday. So having said this, I think once we have a big party for Ann and congratulate her and we have a new planner on board, I think we need to begin to do the strategic planning that pulls together some of these high priority goals and activities from all of these plans and then to follow them more judiciously. And I did like how this plan talked about follow-up actions and getting back to the committee. And I'd like to see the town planner here a couple of times a year telling us how we're doing in these areas. And Mr. Chairman, in the interim, I suggest that we pull from these plans some very high priority goals that we can track for the year. And I noted that we're responsible for a bunch of stuff in here. So some things can be done sooner, like deciding who looks at lake management and climate change plans. And I think others might take a little bit longer, but I think we should really know what we're responsible for. And I'm perplexed about one of them. And that's the one about coordinating with private dam owners to see if there's any mitigation measures that should be taken. And I'll note that the BRIC program, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities program, that they cite for where we could get money, has been axed by the current administration. And what I mean to point out is, we don't know the landscape anymore, it's changing rapidly. I even Googled today to see what we had available, but it's changing. So there's a couple places I think the historical commission should take some of the things in each place that says historical. And then there are just a couple of minor things that I had, and I can tell Ann that on the side, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just a little bit through the chair, thank you, thank you Elaine. We saw some of the same things. I too looked for the emergency operations plan because I was very interested and could not find it. And we certainly can take Ann's word for it, but to make sure that that plan dovetails with this mitigation plan, I think is, is really important. To get a little bit specific, we have a new fire chief and he's the emergency management director, and I just want to be sure that, that Chief Sad, who I have great faith in, by the way, has received the training, et cetera, that, that he needs in order to do that if, if something does come up. And I did notice, and I highlighted, I didn't, probably didn't read it word for word like you did Elaine, but I highlighted everywhere it said that there was, the boards had responsibility. So I think it's something that we need to come back and revisit and, and decide what we do, what we do about it, set priorities. There were a couple there that were already labeled high priority that we need to take a look at, so. And most importantly, to thank Ann and her team for what she did here, so, great stuff.
And through the chair, I think we did, Jeff was instrumental in the emergency management plan creation. So it's good that we have him on board to tie it together, so that'll be a benefit.
But I wonder if, after the meeting, if you can help us find that thing? Okay, thank you.
I did read that too. And it's a lengthy report, but it did highlight a lot of areas where I think we've got a lot of work to do. And there are a lot of different types of emergencies. And I agree with you that the Board of Selectmen, after reading that, the Board of Selectmen is going to have a lot of responsibilities, meaning the, those emergencies that arise.
Responsibilities, I might say, that weren't on the brochure, we all ran.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
And I'll sign it.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ann. Nice job.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to stay on the line for the, for the next item in case you have any questions about the comments I submitted.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the next item is a public hearing. It's an alteration of premises for outdoor seating application and request for outdoor entertainment submitted by the Swinging Chicken LLC located at one thirty-eight Lake Street, Webster, Mass., for one time.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
We did have to do a roll call, so.
That's right. Can you do a roll call?
Yes.
Plug number four?
Yes.
Plug number five?
Yes.
Is there any favor?
Yes.
Hello.
Hi.
Would you introduce yourselves?
Sergio Manzi, my lawyer, Mike Jolton.
Hi.
Welcome.
We're here tonight to request an amendment for the alteration of premises for Sergio's liquor license and entertainment license. Request is for a limited use in that the plan would be to offer alcohol and entertainment in a reserved area for a limited number of Saturdays from two o'clock to six o'clock in the afternoon. The thought would be to only offer this accommodation one time this year if this happens to go through in a timely manner. And thereafter, we would offer this accommodation about a dozen Saturdays per year when the weather's good. The limited number of days and the restricted times of two to six that Mr. Manzi is requesting is really out of respect and courtesy for the existing neighbors and/or butters. In fact, if you are familiar with the property, surrounding the whole property now is an eight-foot highway-grade fence that is used to block out sound, which is highly effective. Really, what Mr. Manzi is seeking here is approval that is significantly less than what many of our existing establishments in town currently operate under. We have reviewed the comments as submitted by Chief Shaw, Chief Sad, and Ann Morgan from planning and zoning. It's my understanding that Mr. Manzi has spoken to both Chief Shaw and Chief Sad and has alleviated any concerns they might have. I'd like to particularly address Ann's comments in that she states that this amendment would require site plan review. Our contention is that this does not trigger site plan review. And that is because there is no reduction in existing parking spaces, there is no impact of stormwater runoff or drainage, there is no effect on traffic safety, and it does not hinder the aesthetic quality of the neighborhood. But most importantly, there's an alteration for very few days a year and for very few hours. When it's not being used for this purpose, the site would return to its current status as it is. Allowing this to go through would be a benefit to this community, but also a benefit to a local business owner. So we ask for your blessing on our request for amendment.
Thank you. Do we have any input from? Come on up. One at a time.
My name is Carolina Cooper, and I am a property owner and resident of precisely the property in front of the city.
Could you stand up, please?
Yes, of course. My name is Carolina Cooper.
Should give her the mic.
Why don't you take the microphone?
Thank you. Hello, good afternoon. As I said, my name is Carolina Cooper, and my husband and I, we are the property owners at one thirty-five Lake Street. We are right in front of the Swinging Chicken. Our property is also our residence, so we live there. And we also have tenants who live on the second floor. These, the reason why I want to speak is because the Swinging Chicken, although it is a business that probably has the right to be there, I don't know if this is a residential or mixed-use area, it is the only business in the block, as far as I know. And out of the other businesses on Lake Street, this is different because it does emit noise that disrupts to certain extent, in fact, to a great extent, the quality of enjoyment of our property. I'm speaking for myself and also for my tenants. I am not sure what my neighbors think about that, but this is our second summer here in Webster. We bought the property in May last year. And we have been learning or trying to learn to live with the, what we describe as a noisy background, that although it's not all day, it definitely is loud enough for us to hear when we are indoors with closed doors, closed windows, heavy curtains drawn, shout, and the TV on, and we still hear it. It's not just the karaoke nights on Fridays, Friday nights. It's actually quite a nice thing to have a lively neighborhood. But this is, is not just the sound coming from the karaoke night itself, but it's also the aftermath, when the venue closes, the patrons gather outside for a while, for a few, I don't know, an hour or maybe half an hour. And it's, you know, they are already a little bit tipsy or more than that. They shout and they rev their vehicles, and this is, you know, it's not office hours. We are talking about late into the night when some people, I would say, because this is what I consider a residential area, what some people would say could definitely be disrupting their sleep. I understand the points the gentleman has just made with regards to their hours, the two to six. And the thing is, we already have enough noise coming from it as it is. It's not just during the nights, as I said before, it's also during the week. There are patrons who come and the venue does have patrons who enjoy riding motorbikes, who enjoy coming in their vehicles, and sometimes they can be very, very noisy. Sometimes they grip themselves by revving their vehicles, and this is quite a frequent happens. So I would argue that we would not be supportive of any extension of the premises or outdoor entertainment offered at any point during the year. Because even if it is, if this is a request for a few Saturdays, this will be, this will set a precedent. And then it will be not just a few Saturdays, it will be the whole season, and then it will not be the whole season, but the whole year. And, I mean, we are, I'm just assuming that would be the case, but that's what tends to happen statistically. So that is what I came to say. As I said, not, not supporting of extending the premises or making modifications for outdoor entertainment or outdoor serving or anything like that, if that is, if that is clear enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, why don't you go back to the microphone? Did you give us your name, please?
Yes. My name is Connie Andre, and this is my husband, John.
And your address, please?
Excuse me?
Your address, please?
Yeah, we live at one Woodlawn Street in Webster, and we've been there for forty-five years. Woodlawn Street is a dead-end street and is in close proximity to the proposed venue. We are here this evening to officially object to the application for license.
Could you get closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Is it on?
Yes, now.
Okay, sorry. We are here this evening to officially object to the application for a license that would permit outdoor live music at the Swinging Chicken located at one thirty-eight Lake Street. Our residential zone is currently quiet, and the introduction of a live outdoor band will cause an unacceptable increase in noise levels, increased traffic, parking congestion, and public safety. Live bands will draw larger crowds in an area not designed to handle it. This will negatively affect the quality of life for residents and could lead to a decrease in local property values as the area becomes less desirable for residential living. People work all week and look forward to the weekend. In good weather months, they like to open their windows, have barbecues in their backyards, get together with friends and families, play their own kind of music, not have to listen to whatever music is being forced on them. Some neighbors work rotating shifts and sleep during the day. Babies nap during the day. People like to work in their yards and should have the right to peace and quiet while doing so. Woodlawn Street would be directly impacted by the overflow of cars because of the lost parking spaces this band would occupy. The granting of this permit would contradict the very purpose of residential zoning laws, which are in place to protect the well-being and peaceful enjoyment of the community. We urge the board to reject this application and prioritize the well-being of the residents who live and own property in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Debbie Jolan, this is my husband, Dennis. We live at one Rosemont Street, which you know, before long is going to go away. We live, our front yard faces the back end of the Swinging Chicken. Yeah. Now, in our.
Oh, you're in that property behind the property that's vacant now?
Exactly, yeah, you know where we are.
Okay.
We can hear in our home, because our bedroom and living room are at that side of the house, we can hear when there are people on what is now the back porch area, I think it's got a roof on it, we can hear them talking and laughing in our bedroom. That's how loud it gets and how voices carry. I don't care if they've got an eight-foot fence up there, that's doing nothing to the sound. I don't care what he says. I live there, he doesn't. The sound carries. The sound carries, the laughter, the loudness, the motorcycles are horrific, going all around it, they rev their motors all the time. I shouldn't have to close my windows. I should be able to enjoy the summer and have my windows open and not have to close them because at 11, 12 o'clock at night, they're going strong over there. Now, to add this additional outdoor, they're saying two to six live band. You can't tell me that at 6 o'clock, everybody's going to vacate. They're going to carry this partying over, and it will be outdoor partying up to what, I don't know what kind of hours. So I feel very strongly, as does my husband, Connie did an excellent job with what she had to say, and I agree with everything she says, we strongly, strongly object to this. We live in that neighborhood. We do not want to hear this music and all the rowdiness, and the more they drink, the more rowdy they're going to get, and we don't have to listen, we shouldn't have to listen to that. I feel very strongly, so does my husband about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Amanda Markin with a 140 Lake Street.
Can you get closer? Get closer to the microphone?
The business that's applying for this is 138, and I'm 140, so there's a street that separates us. So when I purchased my property, I did my due diligence, I knew that there was a bar across the street. You know, I went there when they were open to see how the noise was. I went a few different times. He bought the property, sorry, the business owner bought the property in a residential neighborhood, just as I bought my house with a bar next to it. With that being said, it was a lot noisier than what I expected, but that is what it is. However, a few years ago, he approached, I don't know, some of us, about putting up this fence. That fence has done absolutely nothing. The only thing it does is at street level, you can't see out and I can't see in. However, from my house, I can see everything. It's done nothing, and the way my driveway is and the way my back door is, is that every time I get out of my house, there are people there smoking, and that was one of the caveats when he's talking about this fence, when I was approached by him, and then there was two other times by some female employee of his about this fence, is the privacy, there won't be people smoking, they won't be looking, you know, into your house, all these things. None of those things have mattered. As far as the parking, that was the other thing, and the traffic on Woodlawn, those were also mentioned as far as reasons for this fence. It has done very little, at least from what I see. So with that being said, the noise is a problem, it always is. I get that. However, you know, most of us work nine to five, Monday through Friday, some of us don't. So now we have an additional concern of the weekend, and is it going to stop there? Are we going to then apply for a Sunday permit, perhaps something else? Privacy is a big concern, because I don't have any, because I literally have somebody staring into my house. There's one guy who's out there smoking all the time. And then parking. So I know that they said that there's not going to be any impact on parking, however, parking is a big concern, especially if it's busy enough and they need to overflow, which every weekend, there's at least a few cars from the bar that are parking there. However, when they start parking on both sides, sometimes I can't get out of my driveway. Four times I've been in communes with that, and it's been a couple of minutes to over an hour to get the people to move their cars. That's unacceptable. Moreover than that, and that's not necessarily the business owner or even the employees, but this is what happens, right? And then you have the concern, well, if I can't get my car out, how could a fire truck get down there? So I live on Lake Street, my house is going to be fine, what about my neighbors? These are things that are not being considered and has not even been mentioned by the applicant as far as like how this is going to impact, but these are all real concerns, and the noise is just, it's unacceptable. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to say a few words?
Through the chair, I'd just like to ask those of you residents who have made complaints, has there been calls to the police departments by interview for noise or parking situations? Okay, thank you.
No, I called, as far as not being able to get in and out of my driveway, I called the business, and once I stopped in, the time that I got away power to get my car back, it was my car coming to my driveway. I called them twice and went in there, and I told them that I wrote all the costs, not because I wanted to get into the house and not have the car parked on the street, but I tried to be a good neighbor.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
I had, through the chair, I had...
You want to say a couple of follow-ups?
Sure.
Fifty-four, fifty-four letters were sent out to certify the butters for this meeting tonight. We heard from four. Many of, many of our establishments in town have the same issue with neighbors and their concerns. Mr. Manzi here is trying to be a good neighbor. He thought he came in with a good plan that would be beneficial to all. Two to six in the afternoon on Saturdays, once, one time this year and a dozen times going forward on Saturdays, I don't think is an unreasonable ask when you compare it to the existing establishments with how they operate in town currently. A lot of what you were told just is factually not true. I mean, there is no decrease in parking. In fact, he's increasing parking places by a couple. You have your comments from the police chief, you have your comments from the fire chief. I mean, we contend this is not as bad a thing as what the neighbors make it out to be.
Through the chair, I have a question on that, because you mentioned, the fire chief mentioned you could, a problem with getting the fire trucks around, and you said there's no problem, so can you explain that?
There's, there's two drivers. There's one that comes in on each side of the building. Why don't you explain, because you've talked to him.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
I spoke to Chief Sad, and he met with me, with the deputy chief, and he had an issue about one packing, two packing spots on the right-hand side of the building coming in. I said, they're gone, took them out. So he was all good with that. I spoke to Mike Shaw, he was worried about, I want to just address one thing, the lady said about going after 6 o'clock. I, you know, when you book a band, it's a three hours, they only play three hours. So 10 to 6. So, I mean, two to six, so two to six, they go first hour and a half, they take a half-hour break, then they go another hour and a half, that's at 5:30. I did that purposely, so at 5:30, yeah, because Mike Shaw was, his concern was people still straggling around on the parking lot. I did it to 5:30, that way I get everybody back in the building and the band can break down this stuff and then leave.
Now, as far as serving drinks, will they be, how are you going to control the drink? The band is one thing, drinking in that outdoor area is another thing. How are you going to address?
It's all going to be petitioned up, Jersey varies.
But I mean, the serving of alcohol. You'll serve alcohol between 2 and 6.
I'm sorry?
You'll serve alcohol during those times?
During outside.
Yeah. What happens at 6?
No drinking allowed outside.
No, 5:30, 5:30, back inside. The minute the band stops, I'd take...
So no drinks will be allowed outside?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I mean, they can, anybody can come watch the days I do it, I'm going to be strict about it, so.
Now, you also mentioned once this year at 12. I didn't see that in your application.
Well, I was going to try to get one in this year, but...
No, I understand that, but more, I keyed in on the 12. You said, you said...
Next year, Saturdays, and weather permitting.
So you're looking...
It's obviously just a good weather situation, so it don't...
There's no cover or anything, no tent, no...
That's right. There's only a cover for the, where the band sets up, that's it.
So the 12 is, I'm really just approximating, how many good Saturdays could we expect to have?
Yeah, no, it's just, we, I believe that we need to define, is it going to be eight? Is it going to be 12? Is it going to be 16? You know, when's it going to be? Is it going to be April to October? You know, that needs to be hammered out, I think, so we can...
Well, I figured Memorial Day...
We don't need to do that now, because you'll be going for a license next year in January, so we're more worried about, you know, this year and that. The, the other thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I drove, I think there are directional lines in the, to direct the traffic going counterclockwise behind the building and out, and I think that's why the parking on the far side is angled diagonally for that purpose.
That's right.
I'm a little fuzzy on how that park, I don't see how it's laid out right. How, how's the people that are coming in through the right are going to come in, I mean through the left, are going to come in through the left and look to park there along the side of the building?
Oh, yeah, they have to come in the right, go around the back, there's room to go.
I thought that's going to be blocked off when you have the band.
May I?
Yes, yeah.
I changed one thing. This used to go right to there.
Oh, okay.
And when I was out there, I'm like, I don't need all this space, so I shrunk it down half a size, so now they can still come in, go around, go around the building.
And a fire truck.
And a fire truck.
Well, you've eliminated these two.
Chief Sad was, there's two here and there's one here at my loading, right, one of the loading dockers. Eliminate those.
Do they have a fire truck there, trying to go around?
Well, Chief Sad came up with the deputy chief, they were both there.
He came up there?
Yep, I got a, oh, I signed, he's supposed to send a letter to Ann, Chief Sad and Chief Shaw, they're supposed to send a letter to Ann that they were all sent.
All we received was the initial letters.
Yep.
So this diagonal parking will stay as it is?
Same, yeah. There's only four spaces here that would, for four hours every Saturday.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like...
So there's a total of how many parking spaces?
Were you down to 30, 29? 31, 30, so 29, because you're taking two away from here. There's 32, so it'll be 30.
Well, those are 33 and 34.
Oh, oh, okay.
And what happens with overflow parking? If you retract a lot of people with these bands?
It's just like any other, like a Friday night, you're like a Friday night or one of like that, people just...
You have live music there now? You have live music there now?
Just karaoke.
Just karaoke. So this will be the first time you have live bands?
Yeah.
Do you plan on any, setting any controls of those bands? Some bands are good, some bands are very loud.
I mean, it's going to be a lot of country stuff, people are country, so...
Except in your app...
Indian Ranch has country stuff too, so, Indian Ranch has country stuff too, it can get loud.
I mean, I'm, that's a perfect example of that, they have, how many days do they play?
It's a, it's a set number, it's there, yeah, but we're sensitive to that.
Down the street from me, what from there, this makes, made it able to the seven o'clock event with the rock and doc, everyone there.
Yeah, except you did say in your application that you were going to have live, you'd control the music, so my question was how? The same question as Earl.
See, they, they, some of the, some of the venues...
Or anything like that, because I can't stand this stuff myself.
Some of the venues have it, the control board, you can't turn the amp up, you know, beyond seven or whatever it is. That, that's, that's...
Are you going to have singing too?
I'm sorry?
Just the band. Will there be singing?
Yes.
Sit, sit, yeah, there'd be like...
Singing. Singing in addition to the music?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the band, yeah. Just like, just like the other couple places in town, same thing.
Yeah, Ann, do you have any questions or discussion? Ann?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can, yes.
Okay. So I did look at the drawing that they submitted with their application, and they are going to be reducing the parking. So what we're looking at here is a further intensification of the use of the site, which clearly impacts the residential neighborhood. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming use in a residential zoning district. And as they are reducing the parking, that does require site plan review. When they had come to the planning board a number of years ago to build that back patio, there was a lot of concern about having enough parking onsite. And at the time, it was deemed okay, not great, but when you start bringing in bands, now they are bringing in various, their own equipment, it's not patron parking. The bands will be taking up parking that's intended for patrons, which is a further reduction in the availability of onsite parking. Now, we have a bylaw in town that says all parking for uses must be contained onsite. And the, the proposed use here is going to be reducing that, in my opinion, fairly significantly, but all the other concerns that have been raised by the neighbors or whatnot are things that get addressed through the site plan review process. So my recommendation would be for you to hold off in granting any kind of license until all of these issues can be hashed out at the planning board under the proper review process where all the neighbors are notified within 300 feet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Two and four.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm Corey Troyer, 3 Rosemont Street. My property was a bad, so it's mainly taken out of the Woodlawn Street. Two questions, the first is about the parking that has existed. I understand that, as you were saying, that parking will be reduced. As it stands, even with the gentleman's fence, there is still overflow parking on Woodlawn Street. I don't know where else people would work, it seems now, because that's where overflow would end up. I've, I've talked with the vendors a lot, we would see signs for, you know, don't park here, this isn't part of the street, a lot of residents, there are instances where, like we're having the other side of Woodlawn Street, where fire access to a property is possible with policy issues. If I was ever blocking my property, I'd have a problem. I haven't had that issue yet, but it's something I can see happening, especially with more people, especially a band playing on the property, parking being limited, people being there longer throughout the day. That's my first concern, was overflow parking. My second is the volume, if it can be controlled like the gentleman, Earl, before was saying, by a master switcher, there was a limit that the Town Quidd Institute is saying, you know, when things don't get over a certain level, some bands are country, some bands maybe a little rock, if it's singing, if it's karaoke, different levels are developed into different things. If there was a parking class level that we could say, this is where there's a ceiling for it, this is where it's too much, I think that would go a long way, I've heard anything addressed to that concern. Those are my two concerns and questions.
I have one more comment to make, as far as the gentleman said that there's only four of us here that are commenting on all the letters that are notified. First of all, a letter didn't say, come and review your discussion, like the planning board will say to you, if you have any questions or comments, come to me, your love, come. This didn't say there. I think there's a lot of old of you in the neighborhood that perhaps didn't feel comfortable coming here, or didn't know you could come here and voice your thoughts, so just because four of us live here, it doesn't mean a whole lot of people are going to have to do this. Those individuals are actually saying, one this year, 12 next year. 12 could turn into 14, 15, 20. If you get really nice weather, perhaps the winter, like our winters, it's getting a little bit nicer than the usual, who's to say there won't be more than 12? Who's to say that? And I, I don't think that we should have to deal with this kind of sound in the residential neighborhood. It's bad enough with those TV screens and the people on that back porch that we can hear, now we're going to have to listen to live dance in our backyard. No, it just, it's not fair to the residents. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right, thank you for your comments. All right, thank you for your comments.
Chairman, I think a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any other discussion? By the board? Okay. Kelly, would you, your roll call?
Selectman Davies?
Yes.
Selectman Moore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman Feimer?
Yes.
Okay, discussion?
I'd just like to mention, I think the parking is, does need to be looked at, and I think the planning board should look at it. I think it's been mentioned that it might be a problem now on occasion, and people brought up good point, what about the band members and parking and so on. So I think that does need to go in front of the planning board to look at that and address it, whether it's, you know, signage or something else needs to be done in that neighborhood, whatever. The other issue is, I've gotta say, I have lived adjacent to a barroom in Webster for forty years, and I know what happens and what goes on and everything that you've, you have to set it within reason and by talking, either through the barroom manager or through the police department. I was on call in a hospital and I got locked into my driveway one night when I got called. I had to get the police, they had to tow the car. That stuff is real and I think needs to be dealt with, but the fact that Swingin' Chicken's been there, they've had music for a number of years, and you all have to set mutual respect for one another, and they have rights to run their business, you have rights yourself, and there needs to be a balance. I mean, it's not a business that came up after you moved, it's a business that was probably there before you moved.
I know the specialist, just a comment, you talk about music, they have music indoors. Indoors is different than outdoors. So if they only have music indoors, fine, I just don't think it should be outdoors or in the town neighborhood, use it. Keep it inside the building.
And another thing, do we have to accept the overflow traffic that comes from the business onto our street? Is that something that?
It's public street, right?
Yeah, on Woodlon Street? It's a dead-end street?
Yeah.
And it's, once they get parked on both sides, they're done.
Well, that's up to, again, the planning board to look at, parking.
Okay, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, that's true. So through the chair, first of all, I personally, and I think this board has a real history of being very business-friendly, and that being said, I hear what these residents are saying loud and clear, and it is a significant change. I personally wouldn't be comfortable with any vote until we heard back from Chief Sod, number one, about his concerns, because those are very real concerns and bother me a lot. So I don't know that we can do anything tonight. Well, I know I wouldn't be interested in doing anything this evening until we hear it more.
Yeah, I think I'm more comfortable if the planning board takes a look at it, because I still think there's a parking issue, and definitely the fire, I'd like to hear Chief Sod's view on it. And there are ways to control decibel, and I asked the question because you did say you were gonna control it, and other businesses have come to us and told us how they did it.
I believe it, but in my view, the decibel limitation laws, they're not that effective because the bands are just at the highest level constantly. It's not, you know, that's the highest you can go, so.
It depends on the wind.
Yeah, depends on the wind, so, but anyway, I don't think I'm in a position to make, do anything this evening.
I agree with what you're saying. I agree that there has to be some control. If it goes forward, there has to be some control of the decibel level. Parking, I just see that as a real problem, because you are gonna have the band on-site, and if you can't, if they can't park on the road, they're gonna take up spaces. And if this goes forward, there has to be some kind of limit on the number of concerts. I want to hear back from Chief Sod, and I want to hear back from the planning board, and I think at this point, what we should do is table it and let the planning board do its work, and see what they come up with to make it a minimum to both the citizens in residential area and you, the business. But we have to remember, this is a residential area, and they deserve to be listened to.
Can I just one thing about Woodlon Street? I'm willing to talk to the superintendent of the highway to Bob McKennie, and my fence, there can be signs along the whole fence saying, no parking, violas will be towed. I'll put it along the whole fence, and we will call tow trucks.
Yeah, that's fine, but you'll work that out with the planning board and come to a mutual conclusion that allows.
Yeah, we'll let this go to the planning board at this point. I would vote no until we get, hear back from the planning board.
Do you want to take a vote to defer it to the planning board for review?
Yes, that's the next step.
I'll make a motion to withhold findings till we hear from the planning board and Chief Sod.
And a vote. Defer a vote on this particular.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Works and carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Ann, again.
Thank you, Ann.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing also, hands for the transfer of the all-alcohol pouring license number 00037-IRS-1342 from Kinsley Hospitality Inc., doing business as Mohegan Bowl located at 51 Thompson Road, Webster, Mass. 01570, to Ryan Family Amusements LLC, DBA Ryans. And it'll be a discussion and possible vote afterwards to approve the transfer of the all-alcohol pouring license.
I make a motion, we open the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Selectman Davies?
Yes.
Selectman Moore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Chairman Feimer?
Yes. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board, thanks for having us. My name is Mike Rossi, I'm an attorney with the firm of Colin Kavanagh, Rosenthal, Peisham Ford, with offices at One Federal Street in Boston. With me is Zach McCall, who's the director of operations of Ryan Family Amusements. We are here tonight to ask the board for authorization to transfer a all-alcoholic beverages liquor license currently held by Mohegan Bowl to Ryan Family Amusements, incident to a sale of the business from Mohegan to Ryans.
Was that last sentence about a sale?
So, Mohegan Bowl, which has operated, as I'm sure you all know, in Webster for many, many years, there's an agreement for that business and another business owned by the same owner to be sold to Ryan Family Amusements. So as a result of that pending sale, we're here before you with a request to transfer their liquor license. And I'm not sure if members of the board are familiar with Ryan Family Amusements. Ryan Family Amusements has been in operation in Massachusetts since the late 1950s, and this business, a family-owned business, it operates family entertainment centers, bowling alleys, arcades, and the like. It currently operates six locations in Massachusetts that have liquor licenses. So it's, the company, and I'd like to ask Mr. McCall to address this in a moment, but the company is very familiar with the safe and efficient and secure operation of facilities that serve alcoholic beverages. There's no plans to rebrand Mohegan Bowl as Ryans, and I think the expectation and the hope is that many of the current employees will stay on and the operation will continue. But Ryans will be the new owners and will be able to at least lend its decades of experience to the business and to help the business continue to grow. I should point out as well that there is, separate from the transaction that we're here before you tonight, there's also a transaction in the works where Ryans, the business of Ryans Family Amusements, will be sold, there's some new investors that are coming in, so there'll be some new ownership. So in the application, the owners of Ryans that are identified are the owners that are coming in. But as I'd like Mr. McCall to explain, many of the longstanding Ryan employees intend to stay on and to continue to operate the business. So Zach, could you just maybe explain a little bit about your role and what you do?
Yeah, hey, I'm Zach McCall, I'm the director of operations for Ryans. As Mike said, we have eleven locations right now, all throughout New England. I've been with the company for about twenty years now, and I've done everything from passing out tickets to customers to running a full location with a full bar restaurant, and then overseeing multiple locations. As Mike said, we are going through a transition as far as the transaction goes, but all of the current owners are staying on and moving forward. And I think the shortest-tended one that we have has been with us for eighteen years. So it's the same cast of characters that everyone has grown to see and know over the past thirty-some years and eighteen years, and we're just very excited to come to Webster and, you know, continue their story too. Mohegan's been around, I think they opened in 1958, and we opened in 1958, so we're pretty happy to continue that story.
Be happy to address any questions or concerns that members of the board may have.
Is the transfer of this liquor license contingent on the sale? How does that enter?
Yes, I mean, so the way, you know, as I'm sure the board is familiar, the way the commission, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission stages this is that we have to come before you first and get permission to transfer the license, and then once the license transfer is approved, both here and at the state level, the closing, meaning that the actual transfer of the building will occur. And yes, it's contingent upon, I mean, I don't know that I can recite the documents, but if the liquor license wasn't transferred, I don't think the deal would go forward.
Do you plan on making any changes to the building?
No, no structural changes to the building, no changes at this point to the hours of operation or anything like that, the business will remain, fair to say, in exactly the same form.
So we can still bowl?
We can still bowl, yes.
Because we all still remember.
Will it get easier if we have a grandkids to get something with the clock?
That's not my department, but I hope so.
We grew up bowling, so we want to see it continue.
We grew up with Ken.
Yes.
A little duck bin. I should just point out too, if I may, for the record, I think in the application, we indicated that this is a transfer, which of course it is, but Zach will be the manager of, he'll be the licensed manager, replacing the current manager. That's included in the application, I don't know if that box was checked. So he would be the new licensed manager. I think the hope, once the transition is over, is to have somebody that's currently there now fill that role.
And how soon do you?
If your name was on that, I did look at it, but I'm not sure if your name was on.
It was.
I think it was.
Yeah, it was.
I thought it was because I thought it was a transfer, and your name was supposed to be on.
Yeah, it is, I know it's a thick application, but we've completed the change of manager application, his Corey, his passport, all that's included.
Okay, and I think it's David Kelly, just to make sure.
He's as the manager on record, manager of record.
Yeah, I'm embarrassed I don't know this, but when Ryans is sold to the new company, do all of the licenses approvals automatically go with them, or do they have to reapply?
So we're actually in the process of doing this now for some of the other locations, but the way we've, the way we have completed this application is that we're asking for a transfer of the license to Ryans Family Amusements LLC, and the ownership of that company, as we've explained in here, is the new owners, and everything would happen simultaneously. So that we know, because this has to then work its way through the commission, our hope is that everything is approved at the same time, the deal can close, and then the license would be transferred from the existing entity to Ryans with new owners.
Do you expect this to happen before years in?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
No.
Could I have a motion?
Make a motion? I think we need a motion to close the public hearing.
We need a motion to close the hearing first, and then the discussion afterwards.
A move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, Kelly, can you do a roll call?
Selectman Davies?
Yes.
Selectman Moore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Chairman Feimer?
Yes. We're going to draw a discussion and possible vote to approve the transfer of the all-alcohol pouring license number 00037-IRS-1342 from Kinsley Hospitality Incorporated, doing business as Mohegan Bowl to Ryan Family Amusements LLC, doing business as Ryans. Any discussion?
No, I think everything looks to be in order, and you've demonstrated a long track record of, as the family business goes, to, you know, do well in these ventures that you undertake, so.
You've done it before, and we can still go and bowl.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, I think it's important that you've got the experience already to come in and take over Mohegan, because Mohegan is part of Webster.
Do we have a motion?
Not yet, not yet. Any other discussion?
Go ahead. I move that we approve the transfer of the all-alcohol pouring license 00037-IRS-1342 from Kinsley Hospitality Inc. to DBA Mohegan Bowl to Ryan Family Amusements LLC, DBA Ryans.
Second.
Take your pick. Kelly?
Selectman Davies?
Yes.
Selectman Moore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Chairman Feimer?
Yes. Well, good luck.
Very good, yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, discussion and possible vote to approve the special one-day liquor license application submitted by St. Joseph's Church for the I-25 Club Banquet to be held at St. Joseph's School Gymnasium, 47 Wickham Street, Webster, Mass. 01570, on Saturday, September 20th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Is everything in order, Kelly, as far as you, everything is in order?
Yes, I did ask the fact that she could get the tip certification for the server, so I will have that, but yes, everything is. Chief Shump signed up on it, and there's these questions.
Through the chair, just so you know, none of these applications in this, tonight's discussion for one-day licenses, that part about the tip certification was, it's omitted from copies, they probably take copies out of their drawer, and so I've asked Kelly not to accept applications that don't, aren't the correct form in the future.
Well, do we want to, do we want to check that though? With them, once the?
Well, Kelly said she's asked them to.
I have a version that has it on it. These are old ones, they print a bunch of them to have on file for when they need one, but I let them know.
In the future, they've got to make sure that that's, that is something that's important to be checked off.
Yeah, yes.
So Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a, oops, sorry.
Sorry, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, a move that we approve the special one-day liquor license application submitted by St. Joseph's Church for the I-25 Club Banquet to be held at St. Joseph's, 47 Wickham Street, Webster, on Saturday, September 20th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Oops, you can second. Earl seconded.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Next item is discussion and possible vote to approve the special one-day liquor license application submitted by Sacred Heart Church for the I-25 Club Banquet to be held at Parish Hall, 11 Day Street, Webster, Mass. 01570, on Saturday, October 18th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Kelly, do we have everything?
Yes, it's the same as the others at St. Joseph's, I have a certificate of insurance, and she has the proper application going forward.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the special one-day liquor license?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this next one is discussion of the issuance of two one day special permits for the Greek Festival that was held at St. Constantine and Ellen Church on Saturday, September 6th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, September 7th, 2025, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. This was a, a two day permit that Mark and I signed previous to then having it. And this is just for information purposes.
Got to get them applications in soon. This isn't a yearly event.
I did talk to someone there and said, you have to start getting your applications in sooner.
We do know when it is, this one.
It's on my calendar for next year.
Yes, mine too.
Yeah, I told them, you know, you have the, it's occasion, you know, at the same time every year.
Yep.
So I'll remind them next year.
Food was good.
Yeah, food was great.
Yes.
The food was good.
And will be for several more meals.
Okay, discussion of possible vote to appoint Dominic D'Amelia to the Water and Sewer Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Well, this is the fifth and final applicant for membership to the commission. So this makes us complete after several years of running-
Congratulations.
Two, three, four, now we have a full fledge. And Dominic's been to a couple of meetings just to, you know, get the feel. So we're looking forward to bringing him on. He seems like he'll be a good fit. And we have a second applicant, but, you know, feast of famine, we have none for several years and then we get two at the same time.
Wow.
But the timing for our meetings, we have meetings in the afternoons because we have members of, you know, employees that, we don't want to extend the day. So the rest of us are retired, so we can adjust. So we meet during the day, during the week, and that was a problem for the other applicants.
He does have significant project management.
Yeah, yeah, he's a, he's a good, a good fit, yeah, I think, yeah. He's anxious to tour the water plant and the sewer plant.
Okay, good. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Dominic D'Amelia to the Water and Sewer Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2028.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we have two proclamations that Elaine and I will be bringing. One for Rita Saint-Hilaire and one for National Adult Day Health Week. And I'll read the first one. Elaine, can you read the second for Rita?
I don't know.
And by the way, I think this is going to be my fourth year of congratulating Rita.
I know, that's, I was thinking the same thing. Both my colleagues, if you'd let me know when you're going, I'm free, I'd love to go with you, so.
It's the 22nd at 10.
Yeah. Both of you? You're both going 22nd at 10?
I think that's the date, I'll double check if you-
I think so. And the proclamations, we'll bring both of those to, on the 22nd. So I'll read the first one. This is a proclamation declaring September 21st, 2025, to September 27th, 2025, National Adult Day Health Week, Adult Day Services at the Crossroads Policy Practice and Progress. Whereas the town has long recognized the importance of accessibility to adult day services, providing better living for both members and their family tier, peer takers. And whereas local adult day services such as the core adult day center understand the importance of person centered care and develop fun and engaging programming for members across the spectrum of abilities and needs, with all staff working together to provide the highest quality personalized care to their members. And whereas former President Ronald Reagan issued proclamation 5107, National Adult Day Care Center Week 1983, on September 27th, 1983, to give appropriate recognition to centers offering these important services. This week has grown in significance each year since his proclamation was issued. And whereas this year's theme is ABS at the Crossroads Policy Practice Progress, policy and advocacy grassroots efforts leveraging research based policy, provider practice, care design, operations, caregiving programs, and progress metrics measuring impact via research standards, data and collection. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Town of Webster Board of Selectmen, join with citizens of Webster to acknowledge the dedication and commitment of all adult day services and thank their employees and volunteers for improving the quality of life of their members and family caregivers, as we recognize the week of September 21st, 2025, through September 27th, 2025, as National Adult Day Health Week, signed on this day, the 19th of September in the year 2025, by the Board of Selectmen. Elaine, you want to read the proclamation for Rita?
Yes. Proclamation Rita Saint-Hilaire, 103rd Birthday. Know all men by these present that the Webster Board of Selectmen hereby officially recognizes that Rita Saint-Hilaire is celebrating her 103rd birthday. Whereas Rita Saint-Hilaire was born on September 29th, 1922, in Northbridge, Mass. to Melvina and Delphus LaPlante, and a sister to Lujine LaPlante. Whereas Rita graduated from Northbridge High School in 1940 and worked in the Rockdale Mills until she married Dennis J. Saint-Hilaire in 1942 and moved to Webster, Mass. Like many women at the time, Rita went into the workforce as the men left for World War II, working at American Optical soldering glasses for the soldiers. Whereas Rita gave birth to their only child, Dennis R. Saint-Hilaire, while her husband was serving his country. Rita has two grandchildren and three great grandchildren. Whereas Rita and her husband Dennis owned and operated their own retail sales business. Later in life and while living in Florida, Rita worked in the bakery at Publix. Whereas Rita is a devout Catholic, having spent many hours praying as an adorer at the Amaya Center Chapel in Webster, and continues to be an active participant as a member of the Marian Prayer Group. Rita is also a third order Franciscan. The Town of Webster is honored to have you as a resident, presented with pride on the 23rd day of September in the year 2025.
The 23rd.
23rd. But just informational, that's beautiful. Who writes these?
Guys do, you do.
Really, really well done.
Get an A+.
It's the way that you spoke to him.
Okay. We don't need a vote to, for these proclamations, do we? Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, the next item is to vote to approve the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting to be held on Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at Park Ave Elementary School, 58 Park Ave, Webster, Mass. Reading, reading the warrant, together with Constables of County Foreside, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required and directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Webster, Foreside, who are qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Park Avenue Elementary School, 58 Park Avenue in said Webster, on Monday, October 20th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m., then and there to act on the following articles to read. Article 1, Report from the Finance Committee of Board of Selectmen to hear and act upon the report and recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and its finance committee, or take any other action thereon, and this is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Article 2, General Fund Prior Year Bills, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the town administrator. Unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any other action thereon, and that's sponsored by the town administrator. Article 3, Sewer Enterprise Fund Prior Year Bills, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any other action thereon, that's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Article 4, Water Enterprise Fund Prior Year Bills, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the water unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any other action thereon, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Article 5, Acceptance of Land in Houghton Street, to see if the town will vote to accept two parcels of land located on Houghton Street, accessory IDs 3L40 and 3L60, to be donated by DLV Realty LLC. Both parcels are located in a single family residential zoning district or take any other action thereon, and that's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. And finally, Article 6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from any available funds in the treasury as some of $15,000 for the replacement of aging multi gas meters or take any other action thereon, sponsored by the Fire Department. And you are directed to serve this warrant by publishing a tested copies thereof in your newspaper, published within the Town of Webster within seven days preceding the meeting, and by posting a tested copies thereof with the town clerk, and finally on the public library. Thereof fail not, make do, return your drawings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meeting, given under our hands this ninth day of September in the year of our world 2025, by the Town of Webster Board of Selectmen, Thomas Claybar, Chairman, Mark Rogers, Vice Chairman, Elaine Davies, Clerk, Scott Dietzick, and all the board.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting, held on Monday, October 20th, at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
It'll be a short meeting.
It's going to be a very short meeting. Article 1 is the standard article. Article 2, we have six prior year bills that equal $7,375.5. Article 3 and 4, those passed over, not having those submitted, those are standard that we usually put on on a meeting morning. Article 5, Horace Lockham just accepted their ghost street at their last Horace Lockham meeting. And Article 6 was submitted by the Fire Department. They currently have global gas meter sensors that are deteriorated and the technology is outdated and they're compromising some of the liability in the devices and the cost of risk for all of them now, so they're just taking through these.
Excuse me, in total?
And there's no more room for adding any at this point?
No, the warning is-
Good, thanks. Do we, can we have the town administrative report?
Rick did provide the town administrative report and on his behalf, I'll be quick, like he always says, he did give an update on Ryan Ave. The planning board in Compton, Connecticut did approve the request twice. The Town of Webster does have a P.O. in place, has not had any developments in that, so it hasn't moved and been passed, there's a barrier in place. They are still standing on the grounds that their access point would come through the Town of Webster and feel that that would disrupt the neighborhood, so we are protecting our residents at this time and will fully oppose that project. The town plan are proven, Ann Morgan, Rick and myself met with an applicant for a second round of interviews last week. We did provide a letter to him yesterday, an offer letter, and he asked me to Friday to accept, so fingers crossed that we will have someone on board. Ann Morgan has extended her retirement date out to help with the transition, so we are moving forward to hopefully a new hire from the board in a smooth transition. The library did issue a letter stating that we could use $50,000 towards personnel as just a library expense, so we are happy to report that we put out the union, because it will be the full time union employee. We did put that out to the unions yesterday, so they will have more staff over there and hopefully extend some Saturday hours, you are expecting. So we are happy to add staff over there. They are very busy. Saugr has great programs going on, so anything to help them out over there. We do have a meeting on September 22nd as a private board meeting with the school committee and the finance committee regarding the projections and next year's budget. We are meeting next Monday, our finance team with Mo to go over just what we're looking to highlight during that meeting on Monday, so to make sure we're heading a message across to the board, the finance committee, to the residents on how we work for the F17 in the process. The deputy fire chief is looking to maybe hold Horace Lockham's meeting 15, 20 minutes early before meeting, private meeting on the 22nd to swear in the new deputy chief. There was a three panel board that interviewed the deputy chief's candidates, there was three that put in for that position. They had recommendation, me, Rick, the deputy, the chief, sorry, and myself interviewed those three candidates also last week. And we actually went with, it was a consensus that who their top candidate was, and we'd like to present them on the 22nd before the board and on air also. Business breakfast was actually held this morning, Kelly was in attendance to that. It was great information. I know we came back to the office and we were talking about different things that they could afford to improve upon or looking at different avenues, which they could talk about a lot at the points for their next meeting.
Yeah, that was, that was a very good meeting. We get a lot of feedback and it was the first time that we got actual feedback from them. In the past, the town did a good job, then them, no, the business owners know, and the property owners know what the town was doing, but we never really get any good feedback. Today it was really different and we almost did close on time.
And this is the first time that you had businesses that were not business owners or even, or building owners, right?
We had property owners.
So you had different-
Business owners.
So I imagine the dynamics were different.
Yeah.
I also heard in Mr. LePont fashion that they had phenomenal outsider donations.
Oh.
They did, yeah. I had to make sure that they were good, and they were.
Yes, yeah, because that was one of the things that I was worried about really bad, so definitely have those next time. This Saturday coming up is Chief Ely's retirement party at Samuel Slater's. And also on this Thursday coming up is the 9/11 Remembrance at the fire station. It will be at 9:30 sharp with an 8:30 arrival.
It's 9:30, not 9? Thought I saw 9.
Say that again?
I thought it was 9. Is it, if it's 9:30, that's better for me, but I think the planes hit earlier.
Yeah. I think, I think the news said it starts at 9:30 and people should be there at 8:30.
Yeah, so 9 o'clock. It starts at 9.
Sorry.
Starts at 9.
Yeah, thank you.
Elaine, you want to talk about Bytes Books in Bloom?
Oh, yes, yes, and this is, we're, we're on to the upcoming events. And I just wanted to remind everybody that on September 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the library, there will, the Friends of the Library will be holding their fundraiser Bytes Books in Blooms, in which you can see how people translate literary works into flower arrangements, either literally or in an abstract manner. But the reason why it's being done is anybody in Webster who's gone to the library and has gone to a concert, or a lecture, or crafts, or brought their grandchildren for story time, all those are free and they're free because of the Friends. It's not taxpayer dollars, it's because of that, so please support it. the Friends. It's not taxpayer dollars. It's because of that. So please support it.
Okay, one thing we skipped over was the vacancies for Board of Selectmen appointments. Uh, for the Finance Committee, we, uh, need two full members, historical commission, three full members, zoning board of appeals, full member, and an alternate member. And for the planning board, a full member and an associate member. And that's all we have. Do I have a, any discussion? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just one thing before we do is that the, uh, I mentioned to you, Mr. Chair, but I have a conundrum with the October twenty-second meeting. Uh, nine months ago, we scheduled our annual dinner for building, uh, building, which is my lord's reconciliation house, of which I'm executive director of the board. So I'm trying to, on that same night, on the twenty-second. So I'm trying to figure out exactly how I handle that, but just wanted to mention that.
On September twenty-second?
October.
And we have, when is our meeting? And October is October twentieth, right? Not the twenty-second?
No, but the joint meeting is October twenty-second, isn't it?
September.
Oh. Well, as they say in court, can we strike that from the record?
No, it's on YouTube now.
There it is, right on my calendar. Sorry. Forgive me. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold the motion. Uh, nice job, Courtney. Thank you very much.
Courtney, nice to have you there.
Thanks for covering for Rick. Okay, go, go ahead with your motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Nice job.